Good allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing and if you will bow your heads, we're gonna have prayer. Lord, we come thanking you for bringing us through year 2024 to 2025. As we gather today to discuss matters impacting our community, we humbly ask for your guidance and your wisdom. Grant us open hearts and minds to listen attentively to one another and make our decisions reflect the needs of our community with fairness and compassion.
Yes.
We pray for unity in our deliberations and the strength to make choices that best serve the citizens of this county. In your name we pray, amen and amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you, Mr. Collins, for the prayer and invocation. Good evening, Her County.
Sign in, what?
Sign in.
Sign in, okay.
Please sign in.
All right. We have some new toy we're playing with, so bear with us. Tonight, as you started, do the Board of Commissioners have an issue or problem before we adopt the air table, anything? If not, I'll take a motion to adopt. We're still playing with the toy.
If you got it, you can let me.
Okay. I'm ready to adopt the agenda submitted. Got a second?
I'll second that.
Motion second, I don't have time to sit all in favor of I. I oppose, I have it. Thank you. Ms. Attorney, public comment is the first item.
It's pretty high tech.
I'm sorry.
I like this. This toy. This toy I got, don't take it away.
Good evening, Mr., to all the Commissioners, Chair, Vice Chair.
Good evening, then. Good evening.
Commissioner, County Commissioner, County Manager, everyone. My name is Karen McLean. My purpose for standing here is to ask the question for any Commissioner that sits on the board of Hope Area Transit Service. By chance, have you all been able to fix the broken situation where a patron client or customer that is transported by Hope Area Transit is picked up two hours prior and after their appointment is left there five to six hours before being transported back to their home from whatever appointment it is? My purpose for that question is to address the whatever Commissioner or the County Manager or whomever, have they fixed that solution?
Thank you. And public input, we take your information and they'll answer your question later. Thank you.
Ms. Leandro?
Hey, guys.
Good evening.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I'm here about a couple of things. One of them is I'd like an update on what's happening with the shelter expansion. Haven't heard anything. Wow, it's been quite a long while. We need to really get this because people are throwing animals everywhere. The other thing I want you to, I gave each one of you, I know some of you don't read the news journal, you know, so I gave you the Ambassador for Animals is a big group that helps Hope County Shelter like you would not believe. She actually provided me with their tax number to get things from the Walmart for our shelter. They're having a vaccination clinic out there this month, and she's trying to get enough money to buy those tracers that inject it into an animal so you can tell if they belong to someone, to buy 300 of those, and they'll be free to the customer if she gets them, to all the people that go out there. She's really a hardworking little German lady and does everything she can for the animals in Hope County, and she's needing donations. So I told her that I would probably ask you all if maybe y'all could give her a donation. She's trying to come up with $1,200. She's the lady that put in the stations so you can take them at the horse stations in Hope County. It was Ambassador for Animals, and she raised the money for that. But she's trying to come up with enough money so that when people come out and get that vaccination, they can also get a microchip, and from that point on, it will help the shelter find the real owners of animals that have dropped off. So if y'all would consider giving her a donation, I would certainly appreciate it. I know our budget can stand it. We've got a really good budget, and I'd like to hit you up for what goes in the animal shelter yet. So it would be very nice if y'all could make a reasonable, good-sized donation because she helps y'all an awful lot. I still want to hit her an update on my animal shelter. I keep telling you, I'm getting older. I'm going to my birthday party, and this poor lady down here is tired of looking at me. So if y'all would try to get an update from JK and see where things are going, I'd like for it to look like that new building.
It's beautiful, isn't it?
Oh, it's beautiful. So maybe we can maybe get into kind of doctor hours up a little bit.
So we try to get an update by the next, if not the next meeting.
And we'll put all y'all's pictures. I don't care what, you know, we'll put his in the gold pen.
Look like this.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and do try to get her, let me know if you can get her a donation.
Thank you.
Make sure that phone microphone's on because it doesn't say.
Okay, okay. All right, Grayden, got another one?
Ms. Arlene Harper?
Chris, you just catch the mic.
Is I loud enough? I'm loud.
You well heard.
I'm using louds.
Yeah, we heard you. Next one, Grayden.
Ms. Arlene Harper?
That sounded like it was on to me.
Me too.
Good evening. For those of you who may not know me or have forgotten who I am, my name is Arlene Harper, and I manage the Rockfish Chamber of Commerce. The Rockfish Chamber of Commerce, we are a member of the State Chamber, the National Chamber, and a fully accredited member of the National Chamber Federation. As such, we provide the second-largest Backpack Buddy Program in the county. We serve three local schools. And for those of you wondering why I'm holding up a baggie? Backpack Buddies, we provide enough food for the weekends for children enrolled in the program so they do not go hungry on the weekends. These children are identified by the social workers. We don't know who they are, but we do know we have over 92 in our program. Additionally, I'd like to take a moment to congratulate Commissioner Leach and our freshman Commissioner Mary McCollum. Recently, Hope County, we had a job opening, and the two of you were kind enough to apply, and you were hired. And if you take a moment and look under duties titled "Other," I'm sure you will find that it says "Must be ethical, honest, of the highest integrity, and display leadership through servitude of others." As such, I encourage both of you to keep in contact with the community that elected you. As such, I will be here to represent Rockfish. Thank you for accepting the job, and welcome.
Thank you. Grayden?
Mr. Bobby Edens.
Good afternoon, Her County Commissioners. My name is Bobby Edens, citizen of Hope County. I'm here really for a complaint, but I think I need to wait and go through the chain of command.
Your man. Thank you.
I'm gonna wait and go through the chain of command and make it work right, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Austin Perkins.
Good evening, Board. My name is Austin Perkins. This is a bit out of my comfort zone, so bear with me. I'm a small builder. I live in Hope County, and like I said, I'm a small builder that operates out of Hope County mainly. And I just had a couple of questions. Don't know who to direct them towards. I've tried to ask like he did, chain of command, and it led me here for the first time. I'm a first-time visitor here, and my first question is, you know, the water situation in Hope County. As a builder, you know, the county's growing, and rumor through the grapevine is that as it grows, we may see a water shortage. So I guess my first question would be, new tap locations as Hope County grows, is that a foreseeable issue, and is there a short-term remedy? And then my second question is regarding minor subdivisions. The process to get them recorded and platted and subdivided and whatnot, is that taking the same route as major subdivisions this year through a certain process? And I had quite a few questions regarding that, but if that's specific enough, that's basically the question.
Yeah, if we send it back to our planner, she can answer all those and those questions for you. Ms. Jackie, do you have a conversation with him?
I will.
Okay.
Quick thought.
Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Chairman?
That's it? Good. Very good comments. Thank you, Troy, for coming tonight and planning part and local government. We heard each of you, we might not, because they were to review your answers, but they will come to you through that department head.
You mind if I?
No, sir.
And I just want to reiterate to the public, you know, public comment, we typically don't answer questions in public comment. Public comment is where you come and you speak your mind on whatever issue, you know, so if you're upset about something, you want something off your chest, you get, it's rare that we close our mouths and let you say whatever you want to us, but that is your moment to do so. If you have questions, we're not being rude by referring you to someone, but we try not to have a back-and-forth conversation with someone because your three minutes will be up after we go back and forth. So it's actually in policy that they were not to answer your questions during public comment. If we do, we ask that the clock be stopped because we're taking up your time, but typically come after the meeting and let's address your issues so we can point you to the person that can answer your questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas, Commissioner, I couldn't say it, but thank you. Consent A, B, C, D, any board member have any issue, any problem with any of those with which of the board?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second that we approve, A, B, C, and D, and consent item, all had time to consider, all in favor of what I, I oppose, I have it. Thank you. Planning Board presentation, Mrs. Jackie.
We have Mr. Austin present tonight with Insight and Mr. Jason with Benchmark. They both have presentations. We'll call Mr. Austin with Insight will do his presentation first.
Okay.
Thank you, Jackie, and good evening, Chairman Leach and Board of Commissioners.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Yes, sir. So to tell you a little bit about us, Insight, Planning and Development, we're based out of Wilmington. We do have a satellite office in Mount Olive. You know, we're not located in Hope County, but distance has never really been an issue for us. We have clients throughout the state and are more than prepared to make any kind of travel or trip necessary to execute the services. We were founded in 2020. We are a service-disabled veteran-owned small business. Things that we specialize in include comprehensive planning, grant management, consultant services. We also do general planning service work for local governments. Locally, we do planning service work for Pembroke, so not too far outside of the area. We also consider ourselves to be technical experts in FEMA, Public Assistance Administration, debris monitoring, land use planning, land development regulations, and several state and federal grant programs. So to tell you a little bit about the project team that is going to be included on this land use plan is selected, Ryan Cox, he is the president of the company. He has extensive experience in hazard mitigation planning and executing mitigation grants. He worked for a good amount of time with the state of North Carolina as the State Hazard Mitigation Officer. He's also one of the board members with the North Carolina Association of Flood Plane Managers. Ryan's also retired United States Air Force, and he has 15 years of professional experience. Specifically, what he would be contributing in the development of this plan was assisting, would be assisting in development of the future land use map and looking at ways that we can make Hope County more resilient and looking at ways that Hope County can ensure that the environment is protected in the forecasted planning future. To tell you a little bit about myself, I have an extensive background in planning and zoning in North Carolina. I have experience working for both municipal and county governments. I spent time working with the city of Goldsboro, Sampson County, and Onslow County, so I'm familiar with how this plan relates to a county and how the county has to use this plan. I'm committed to environmental protection as well as appropriate designations for future land use. I'm committed to ensuring that there's equity in community engagement and sustainability, that all of those factors come forth in the development of the plan, and that ultimately the plan represents a future that the citizens of Hope County desire to be a part of. I do have experience dealing with military installations and military communities from my time in Goldsboro and Onslow County, as well as with Cherry Point here recently working on the Craven County Camel Land Use Plan. And I am a certified planner with the American Planning Association. I'm also a certified flood plane manager and a certified zoning official. Cindy Anderson, she brings a wealth of experience in data collection and analysis, development of land use plans. She's great in assisting me with community engagement. She's also got a great deal of experience in grant management and organization. She's going to provide a lot of insight in drafting the objectives and actions as well as, you know, providing a level of comfort knowing how those might apply to certain initiatives that the county might have, that those might be directed towards. And then last but not least, we have Danielle Talafarad. She really is concentrated on social media, the project website, ways to creatively interact with the community. She'll help out with a lot of those efforts and do a lot of the logistical stuff behind the scenes so that we can have the types of events and meetings we need to have to make this plan a success. And so some of the current projects, recent and in the past couple of years that we've worked on, the Robinson County Comprehensive Plan, the Pembroke Comprehensive Plan, recently here, the Newport Camel Land Use Plan, the Craven County Camel Land Use Plan, which I did give Jackie a copy of some draft chapters of that to have up there just so y'all could kind of get familiar with some of the stuff I'm currently working on, as well as the Town of Rose Hill Land Use Plan. And currently, we are underway on the update to the Bladen-Columbus-Robinson Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. So we've done quite a bit of work within the region of North Carolina that Hope County falls in. So our understanding of this project currently based off of most recent census data, there was around 46,952 people in Hope County in 2010. That grew 52,000 in 2020. More than likely, that number was probably a little bit under what it actually was. So Hope County, as it was even mentioned in the public comments, Hope County is growing. There's a lot of factors that contribute to that growth, such as Fort Liberty, the transportation improvements and routes that exist within the county, as well as the overall natural environment and beauty of Hope County that draws people to want to call this place home. The most important part of the county are its citizens, and they'll be the most important part in the development of this plan. They deserve this plan to be established with a framework that promotes an equitable future. And we understand that both the Board of Commissioners and the staff of the county are going to rely on this being a user-friendly document that's going to be easily comprehensible with defensible policies and strategies that you can implement and look forward to the implementation of. At a minimum, we're intending for this plan to address housing, recreation, land use, the community, agriculture, military, the economy, transportation, infrastructure, and the environment. And so some of the big plan elements that I just wanted to touch on a little bit that will be probably key pillars of plan development, the future land use map, that's going to be a big part of this. As you know, any kind of rezoning decisions that you make, you're going to need to base off of that future land use map. It's going to help you guide development and growth in the county so that it occurs in a manner that reflects what the citizens want to see. We're also going to take a detailed analysis on housing. We're going to use community input that we receive paired with the data to determine what types of housing might be needed in the county, what we can do to provide communities that the citizens desire to live in. We're going to evaluate the existing transportation network and any kind of planned transportation improvements to help determine where strategic areas may be for growth based off of the routes and infrastructure that exists there. And then certainly the community, as I said earlier, the citizens of the county are going to be the most important part in the development of this plan. We want to engage with several community groups, identified stakeholders, individuals who are just interested in the future and success of the county, so because they're going to heavily influence the direction and the vision that this plan takes. And so public engagement, again, is going to be the most critical part of the development. We want the citizens to feel like they've had ownership of this plan, that they've had an opportunity for their voices to be heard, that they've contributed to the development of the plan. And if we do that, you're going to be holding a document that is easy to rely upon and use because you know there was vested interest from the citizens in this development. We want to conduct this engagement in an equitable manner so that we can be confident that the vision represents the entire whole of Hope County and not just a select view from a group of individuals. We want this to be inclusive for all county citizens in the public engagement portion. And so a key part of that is determining who our stakeholders are going to be. We want to make sure that these stakeholders and groups remain active in the development of the plan. We'll coordinate with staff as well as the elected officials to determine who those groups may be. I've identified some groups here. This list would absolutely grow. These were just some of the first ones that I could think of. I know whenever I was here recently, the Boy Scouts were here. I think this will be a great opportunity to get them involved in a limited basis as they showed a good amount of interest in the land use plan. But reaching out to your local churches and religious organizations, those are oftentimes found to be the backbones of communities. You can get a lot of very valuable input from those organizations, as well as the military installation, the Hope County NAACP, the Lumbee Tribe that has a presence within the county, as well as the agricultural community who might feel their voices are often not heard. We want them to understand that agriculture remains an important part of Hope County. And so to interact with the county, we are proposing to attend either Hope Fest or the North Carolina Fall Festival. That'll be dependent upon whichever one the board requests us to be at. We find it's really helpful to get at these events, get out, engage with the community, you know, build interest, be there to ask, answer questions, provide surveys, and just have general discussions to determine what's going to be important to them in the development of this plan. And so to get off to a strong start, we realize what momentum does for a plan and how effective positive momentum can be. So there's going to be an extensive period of outreach before we have that first meeting where we're reaching out to folks, we're talking with the elected officials in this room, staff, stakeholders. We also plan to provide a food truck at that first meeting to incentivize folks to come out. If anything, they can get a good meal if they don't feel like providing much information. But usually, if we can get a lot of people out, get them talking and interacting with one another, we can get some pretty good ideas on the board. We're also going to use this meeting to identify members of the community that might want to play a bigger part in the development of this plan because they're going to be important as far as stakeholders go when forming that review committee. And so we're proposing for there to be three public meetings. The board could determine to reduce this to two if you feel that may be necessary. These are designed in an open format, so we really don't conduct our community meetings with a lecture where people show up and they get preached to for an hour and a half or two hours. We want them to have the opportunity to interact, ask questions, participate in activities. We want to meet in multiple areas of the county to, you know, reach people where they live and not necessarily require great distances of travel unless the board feels that this may be the best meeting place for those. Types of events that we propose to conduct at these meetings include a strength, weakness, opportunity, and threat analysis, land use map exercises, times where we look at data, interactive rankings of policies to determine what is the most important, value identification, and work on the overall development of the plan's vision. So we also understand that not everybody in Hope County can make it to a public meeting. So to reach those folks, we're proposing to have virtual engagement opportunities, and this is for folks that might not have a traditional working schedule, they might not have full-time transportation, but they want to participate in the plan. We want those folks to have that option. So we will provide two virtual engagement opportunities where they can get in a webinar with myself, and we can go over some of the elements of the plan, and I can determine what is going to be important to them in plan development. The project website will kind of be used as the headquarters for plan development where we have things such as discussion boards, access to the surveys, meeting dates, a question submitter portal, where if they have a question, they can send it in, and it'll come straight to me, and we can work on answering those questions. As well as if anybody has an idea and they have it after the fact of a public meeting and they don't have the time to get up with somebody with the county, they can just get on that website, submit that idea to us. And so we're proposing there to be a steering committee that serves as the leading review board in the development of this plan. We're proposing for this board to be composed of one member of the Board of Commissioners, one member of the Planning Board, one member from Fort Liberty, and six Hope County citizens. These citizens, as I mentioned earlier, were at that first meeting, they had the opportunity to give us their information if they're more interested. Those will be the citizens that are selected from where they apply for that membership to form this steering committee. Now, there is an optional citizen advisory committee. Really, the main benefit of this is the citizen advisory committee is just a citizen-based board. That will provide the citizens with a level of confidence knowing what was reviewed and developed by the steering committee was then reviewed by a group of their peers so they know that that group of citizens is going to hold the steering committee accountable to truly what the citizens have decided is important to them in the plan development.
This steering committee, this is your suggestion?
Yes, sir. This is the proposal of how we would like to develop this land use plan.
Okay. That's subject to change?
Yes, sir.
All right.
So equity and diversity, I know I spoke on that briefly, but we are committed to this plan being developed equitably that considers input from all persons. To ensure equity and diversity in the development, we have requirements that we've established for the members of that citizen steering committee so we don't end up with, you know, six citizens of like mind or gender or age. So we want there to be a diversity in age range, a diversity in race and gender, and as well as three members, three of those citizen members must be of a minority race identified by the census for the county. So the role that the Planning Board and the Board of Commissioners that we're proposing to serve in the development of the plan, Planning Board is going to be notified of all public meetings, virtual engagement meetings, steering committee meetings, any meeting that we have, the Planning Board is going to be made aware of that, and the representative for the Planning Board on that steering committee is going to be asked to regularly provide updates from those meetings back to the Planning Board. Whenever we convene, the Planning Board will meet to formally review and make a recommendation on the plan as required by the state statutes. But we appreciate input from the Planning Board throughout the whole development of the plan. While we might not specifically meet just with the Planning Board because we're proposing to use a steering committee, that Planning Board is welcome to provide input during plan development. The Board of Commissioners are going to be invited to attend all of those public and The Board of Commissioners are going to be invited to attend all of those public engagement meetings as well as we're going to have two separate update meetings with this board during plan development to keep you updated on the status of the plan, where we're at, give you key findings as we find key findings in plan development. The board will be responsible for having the public hearing at the conclusion of plan development for adoption of a plan. And again, we appreciate input from this board from the beginning of plan development to the end of plan development. And so looking at our project schedule and timeline, anticipating getting started on this next month where we're going to work from February to June primarily on data collection and community involvement, moving into Phase Two from July to December, so the remainder of 2025 where we complete our community involvement, we create that land use map and complete the draft plan, and then January to March of next year, so about this time next year, we'll be getting into our final reviews and having our meetings to get this adopted and conclude the planning process and look at what next steps may be. So just to make it clear, you know, we completely acknowledge that Hope County is going to have authority over us during this process and we work for you. So, you know, we will defer to Hope County throughout the process whenever the county wants to make a decision. The county can have confidence in our ability to lead this process and develop a document that's going to be supported by both the board and the citizens. And we understand that nobody knows more about Hope County than this board and the citizens of the county. So we're going to really rely upon your knowledge of this county and not, you know, not try to ever assume that we know more about Hope County than you know about Hope County. And so it'll be an open communication from beginning to end. We realize that whenever there's open communication and everybody's understanding there's an open line of communication, things are going to get done with a lot more confidence and a lot more smoothly. We don't have any kind of predetermined agenda. I don't have any kind of idea of where this plan will go, where it should go. I want this plan to go where the citizens desire to go and where the data reveals that it should go. We realize the challenge and opportunities that Hope County faces due to our years of experience and expertise and we're willing to share those. And we also understand just how important it is for this to be a well-written document one that the county can rely upon and trust as it refers to it and implements it for various proposals. And so looking at project costs, there's a couple of different options up here. The top option is including the steering committee where all of those meetings are going to be in person, a citizen advisory committee where all of those are going to be done virtually. Option two is eliminating the citizen advisory committee, still having all of those steering committee meetings in person. Option three is that both committees are going to exist but all meetings will be virtual. The fourth option is no advisory committee and all steering committee meetings virtual. And then if you wanted to eliminate one of those public meetings, I know I mentioned that earlier, you could estimate about $5,000 off of the $98,340. And, you know, that is really just the county's preference on virtual meetings versus in-person meetings.
So the high end is $105,000?
Yes, sir. That's including the steering committee and that optional citizen advisory committee. Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. So to conclude, we understand the financial investment that this plan is and we want to ensure you that we're going to provide you with a satisfactory product. We're going to address the key elements and factors that are going to lead to a high quality of life in Hope County. We understand the role that the citizens will play and how important they are in this process. We want this plan to be something that's user-friendly, something that, you know, citizens from the age of 15 to 70 can pick up and read and understand what's happening in this document. And we also want this plan to enforce why Hope County is where quality living meets quality of life. So I know that was quite a bit of information. If there's any questions from the board, I'd be happy to ask them at this time.
Anybody have questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just got two small questions. I understand you said it's going to take about 12 months to kind of give a complete plan starting next month.
Yes, sir.
At $105,000 in terms of total cost. You mentioned something earlier about policy and ranking policies. When you all went through Richmond County, Sampson County, Craven County, did y'all talk about the future of tiny homes and their policies? Was that part of your land use plan?
Yes, sir. So whenever you start talking about housing, tiny homes come up a lot, accessory dwellings come up a lot, and there's definitely policies that we've had recently included in plans that might inform some sort of regulation, making it maybe more or less restrictive to allow for certain types of alternative housing to help meet some of those housing needs. But yeah, that's something that's definitely came up in Newport and Craven County on some of the recent work we've done.
And y'all got experience in that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No further questions, Mr. Chairman?
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So this is to staff. Who came to the conclusion of this organization being recommended? Is this your recommendation, Jack?
Benchmark was the recommendation of the planning board.
Okay.
And then the commissioners requested both.
For presentation. And I think Mr. Dogg, before he left, he was the one that was in charge before he left. And I think his recommendation to the planning board was insight, and then the planning board recommendation to us was benchmark. So that's why we came in today to make a final decision.
So we are voting between the two today or we just received information?
Well, if we're ready to take action, we can take action. If not, we can just receive information.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Another group here tonight.
Yeah.
Is it Jackie? Was that them?
Yeah, Mr. Jason. You're with me.
Okay.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
Jason Epley of Benchmark Planning. It's been a while since I've been in front of you all. I think it was back in 2019 when we were working on the joint land use study with Fort Liberty. I'm the president of Benchmark Planning. Been at this for a little over 30 years. Our company, I'll go to the next slide here, we've been around for over 40 years with national experience, working across the country. We focus on comprehensive planning, land use planning, regulation, economic development, placemaking. Looking at our project team that we've identified for this project, obviously myself will be involved as a principal in charge. I have over 30 years of experience working on comprehensive planning across the country. I did live in Fayetteville for 12 years and some of you may remember when I worked with the North Carolina Department of Commerce, had a lot of experience working over here in Hope County and across the region. Vaughn Hanson will serve as the primary project lead. Vaughn has over 20 years of experience and is currently the executive director of the Regional Land Use Advisory Commission. So many of you may be familiar with Vaughn and he's certainly reviewed all the zoning requests and development requests from Hope County, Rayford, that have come to, you know, Fort Liberty. He does that on behalf of that organization. But between Vaughn and I, we have over 50 years of experience as certified planners and we will be managing the project. We'll be supported by Bridgette, Monica, and Emily. Emily has worked here before on the zoning and subdivision regulations. Bridgette and Monica assist us with our research and mapping. And we also have other staff members that can be dedicated to the project as we move forward. Just to give you a little bit of idea of the breadth and depth of our experience, certainly we've worked, you know, as I mentioned, all across the country, but regionally, we've really focused on North Carolina, South Carolina, Virginia, West Virginia, Georgia. Our county-level experience recently, and this is within the past, you know, five years or so, Onslow County just adopted a major plan there, Rowan County, Person County, Cleveland County, Lancaster County, South Carolina, some of you may be familiar with just outside of Charlotte, huge amounts of growth. So we have a lot of experience working in communities that have experienced growth in adjacent to metro areas but also want to preserve their rural way of lifestyle. Of course, our military planning experience, I think, is, you know, goes without saying. You're very familiar with Vaughn and his work with Fort Liberty, but we've also worked in army installation communities across the country, you know, ranging from Fort Greg Adams in Virginia. I know some of these names are different. You know, there's a big change in the names, as you know, recently, Fort Devosas, Texas. And we've also worked in Marine Corps Air Station communities across the country as well as Air Force. So we bring a lot of that experience to this project as well. In Hope County familiarity, we're very familiar with you all, having worked here over the years on the zoning and subdivision regulations, the city of Rayford on their unified development ordinance and land use plan. And in fact, when I worked for Commerce, actually worked on the downtown master plan and wrote the grant for the Main Street streetscape that's out there today. Fayetteville, we're currently working on their signed development regulations. Lumberton with their downtown plan and also worked on their land use plan. Whispering Pines, LDO, and of course, we mentioned Fort Liberty and our Rulak management. So we're very familiar with what's going on in the region, which will help us, you know, as we're gathering information from the public, gathering information from you all, we have a really good understanding of the trends of what's happening in the region. The key tasks that we're proposing are pretty straightforward. Project initiation, that's getting started, research and public input survey, development of the draft plan, eventually public review of that draft plan and prepare the final plan. During this process, the planning board would be, under our proposal, the steering committee. We know that you're short on staff right now, so we would recognize that and we have our staff that can come in and support that to make sure the process goes smoothly. During the research and public input survey, we have lots of methods that we'll implement to gather that input. Community engagement, these are just some of the pictures from some workshops that we feel would be similar. Once again, these would be engaging-type initiatives. We'd spend the first part of our process really, you know, coming, making sure we've got the issues under control before we get out to the community and start getting input on that. So at these workshops, instead of, you know, giving a presentation, we want to make sure we engage the community and get input. The listening sessions are a very important part of our process where we'll engage you all, other community leaders and subject matter experts. We feel it's very important to lay that foundation. Community and neighborhood organizations, the development community, we want to make sure what's going on with developers, are there issues with the current ordinances, things that are holding development back, what are some of the challenges? Property owners, business owners, outside agencies such as NC DOT, we want to make sure we cover our bases so that we have a good foundation of information to draft the plan. Public utility is also very important here in the county as well. Digital engagement, project website is something we do on every project that we undertake. This gives a great place to have that central point of communication. This is from Lancaster County over in South Carolina. And by doing that, we're able to track our engagement so we know how many people are taking the surveys, how many people are, you know, logging on to view their presentations. So once again, you know, not everybody wants to come to a meeting. I know a lot of people commute to work and if they can't get here to a meeting, having this interactive project website gives folks that chance to get involved. Illustrations and graphics are critical. That's something we really, you know, have as a key ingredient of our plan. We want to make sure that people understand what's going on. That graphic on the left is from Lee County where we really try to overlay and show how GIS works. Oh, oh, did it turn off? Natural resources, transportation, infrastructure, land use, all those things are important. And by taking these complex ideas and developing high-quality graphics and mapping, it really helps communicate those ideas when we get out to the public. So these are all things that we feel are very important to ensuring that you have a great plan for the county. Also, we're committed to implementation. You know, it's one thing to have a great plan, but you've got to have great implementation. I can't tell you the great things, you know, I'm going to have to bring my swim gear next time. I've seen the new aquatics sitting over here. It's just great to see those wonderful things happening in the county. Those things don't happen without a good plan. So it's very important that you have an implementation plan. This happens to be from the town of Bermuda Run. We're on our third plan there. Every five years, we have the implementation process. We're able to track, how well did we do? This particular plan was at the 85% phase and we just wrapped up their five-year update. So just to kind of close, wanted to kind of keep it short because I know you may have a lot of questions. We love what we do as Benchmark Planning. We have over 40 years of experience. Personally, I've been doing this for over 30 years and Vaughn, our main project manager, over 20 years. We do know Hope County. We don't know everything, but we are very familiar with a lot of the issues here and feel that we can really hit the ground running with our regional experience. We want to listen to you. We, you know, we do have ideas that we bring from our, you know, depth of experience, but it's most important to know what matters to you all. And so we'll take that experience, what we hear from you, to develop a plan that's really going to chart the future for Hope County. And we're committed to implementation because we don't want to see the plan sit on a shelf. Nobody wants to see that. We want to see it get implemented. So that's our commitment and we'd love to earn your vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Anybody? Anybody got any questions?
About the time then, the time?
Twelve months.
Twelve months as well?
Yes, sir. And our budget, I prepared, I figured you had the proposal, $87,000 is our budget for the project.
Total, $87,000?
Yes, sir.
How many stakeholder meetings are you anticipating?
We're anticipating two to three days of stakeholder meetings and three days of public meetings across the county or central, you know, wherever the, you know, discussion with the planning board and their advisement on where to have those meetings. And that doesn't include, we'll also have planning board review meetings as part of that process as well on a regular basis. You know, once again, we recognize you're short-staffed right now, so we'll make sure we'll try to take on a lot of that, you know, when we have those meetings with your planning board to keep them up to date so that they don't, you know, you can only do so much as one person, right?
No further questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I want to ask one thing. You mentioned in the proposal or your presentation that maybe folks that couldn't come to the meetings or be able to sit down, that you would have a web page that would be up and be active. So if somebody went on there and read what was going on and had a question, they'd send in a question to that site and then y'all would respond back to them?
Yes, sir. And we have typically what we, and the reason we do the website ourselves in-house is because what happens is, you know, sometimes it works out the other way, but, you know, you have a web administrator who has a job to do and if we're sending them, you know, amendments, yeah, it's putting burden on them. So we like to keep the website, you know, we'll create a separate URL. And so you'll just have a link, you know, on your site that, you know, click for the land use plan update and then it'll go to our page and there'll be places where they can submit comments. We'll have the presentations so they can download and look at those. You know, we'll have a map that people can look at. We'll have all the information about the project will be there and we'll maintain it so you don't have to do that.
Okay. So someone could follow that whole process online?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions from the board? Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Do the board want to think about this and make it to see you next meeting? I'm going to ask the question what the board wants. What should the board?
Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't need to wait myself. I mean, if you're going to entertain, if you're going to entertain a motion or whatever, I mean...
I'm most certainly going to entertain it if it's in here.
I, Mr. Chairman, I like, both presentations were great. A lot of thought and preparation went into them, but I like the fact with Benchmark, for the simple fact of the experience that they have in this area with the military, they've worked with Hope County before, they've worked with the city of Rayford before, and they have all those expertise of already engaged in the community and knowing something quite a bit about our community in an extent of working with us. And so I'm prepared tonight and I like their price also. Always like the price. So I'm prepared to make a motion that we hire Benchmark.
Okay. Now, second to Mr. Hunt's motion?
Second.
There's been a motion, second, that we have Benchmark to do this project for us. All members have had time to consider. Are there any all in favor of that? Please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. I have it. Benchmark it is. Thank you. Staff will contact you, Jackie. We'll send a communication through you to him, for him to get back to us. Okay. Thank you. All righty. Captain Department Matters?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have two items before you tonight. The first item is an extension of the Hope County, the WIC contract for the Hope County WIC program. This contract, we started with for Processing Assistant Three in the fall when we had a person that was out on FMLA. And, you know, that person's come back, but we've had an increase in our caseload in WIC. It's actually helped to manage our caseload and it's been improvement. And the WIC director has requested that we extend it to June 30th of '25. And this is... And this is state funds, it's all WIC funds to pay for the salary, no county funds for...
Okay. Ms. McCollum, this is item eight, and you, the help board commissioner, what's your wishes?
I make a motion that we...
To make a motion that we approve it, that's second?
Second.
Motion's second to approve, right? I have a sit on for it with aye. Pose, I have it. You got it.
Thank you.
Okay, give me a b.
And the second item is, Ms. Florine Fleming is the nurse member on the Board of Health, and her membership will expire this month, and she would like to serve a second term, and so come before you to see if she could be reappointed.
I didn't even have to call her, so you've talked to her, and she's confirmed that she wants to serve another term?
Yes, yes, yes.
All right. Commissioner McCollum?
Yes, I make a motion that we accept.
The motion, that, is the motion a second?
Yes.
Motion's second, all have time to consider, I'll fit it with aye. Pose, I have it. There, you got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to be ready, yes, for something.
To accept a bid for some property, Mr. Garby, Garby, Garby?
But yes, there, which one is? He gonna come, don't, whatever you call him.
Good evening, Eric. Good evening. Before you, we have a resolution to accept the offer for the Army Road property.
Okay.
That is in the amount of $4,000.
Okay. That come all return of fees and everything included?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So your recommendation is to accept this, Garby?
This will take it off our books.
Is that your recommendation, Garby? That's a yes or no?
Whatever the board decides is my recommendation.
You have to recommend it first, Garby, for me to decide.
I recommend that the board...
Thank you, Garby. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept this bid amount of $4,000.
Second. The motion's second. Thank you. All have time to consider, all in favor of aye. Pose, I have it. Thank you. You're a smart man, Garby. Tax report, Ms. Dutton, definitely.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening.
I'm here to present the report for the month of November due to my absence at the December meeting. So total collected for the month of November current year was $489,935.20 at a 78.4% rate compared to a 75.81% rate last year. Our year's was collected was $79,728.41 at a 28.76% rate compared to a 24.1% rate. Total collected for the month of November is $569,663.61.
Okay. Thank you.
And then I also have two releases that I'm asking you to approve tonight. One is a land use that was keyed, was not keyed correctly, and a mobile home that was double-listed for a total of $731.40.
What should the board?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Motion's second, all have time to consider, I'll fit it with aye. Pose, I have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, manager report?
Good evening, Chairman, and vice chairman and Board of Commissioners. I want to remind the Board of Commissioners that we have the renaming of the 211 complex on Thursday, January 9th from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Nobody be late.
Why are you looking at me, too?
I'm looking at everybody, I'm looking down the aisle.
Okay, all right. She's looking.
Also, we are doing that. Also, we have the governor's inauguration on Saturday for all commissioners that will be going. Just a reminder that that is Saturday for that. Finance and myself, we are in the process of doing the audit, just so that you know that. We're in the process of working on that right now. They're all behind, our auditors are behind, so just so that you know that Kotang, myself, and Garby, in the finance department, we are currently in the process of working on that, and we will be working on that for the next week or two. We are in the process of working on that. That is all I have.
Then also, the state moved the date back to December?
December 31st.
The state moved that date back for whatever, I think, because of the storm they had?
Yes, sir.
So the report is moved back a couple of months for that reason. So that storm they had put it all behind. We not behind, Hope County is a group that auditors is in other places and behind. All righty. Okay, okay. Chairman report, we have several closed session items, Mr....
Before we do that, Mr. Chairman, I want to do two things. One is, I wanted, I was waiting for the county manager to do it, but I'm going to do it.
Okay.
I want to just recognize that I want all of us to congratulate Ms. Dutton Dutton on being the tax administrator for Hope County. What the county has done, we have combined the tax collection department and the tax assessment department and made one major department and put Ms. Dudley over because we felt like she could do the job. We have a whole lot of confidence in her, and over the years, she has done an outstanding job in collecting taxes. For that reason, we were able to do a lot of things, a lot of growth you see here. So we might sit up here and make decisions, but our staff is going to make us look good. And so I want to compliment her on doing a great job, and your staff doing a great job. And again, congratulations. And let me just go ahead and let you know that we got to give my county manager some credit because she made the recommendation. We got to go to that county manager. Let's go into closed session for, well, let me say this too, Mr. Chairman, real quick.
Yes, sir.
Typically, in the history of North Carolina, the governor only invites certain people to their balls in inauguration. And so this is for Jim Davis, Mr. Davis, former sheriff. In the past, whether you're a Republican governor or a co-coming in or a Democrat, we never got an invite. But it shows the growth and the recognition and, and what the state is viewing of Hope County when they sent out an invite, personally invited all the commissioners to their inauguration. I just think that's major when we've been working so hard since before 1998 or whatever to, to show the state that we're worthy of being part of the whole state process. And I think that the leadership and, and it's, to me, makes me feel good to get invited. Whether you go or not, it's something different. Whether you're being invited, Deacon McCollum, is another thing. So I just want to say congratulations again on the outstanding work that our staff is doing, recognizing us, and then we've been recognized on a state level. That's, it's so important when your colleagues and your professional coworkers see what you're doing on a, on a different level. So I think that's, that's very exciting to, to do that, and I just want to compliment our board on that. That being said, I make a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
That we go into closed session to discuss a personal matter pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, Section 318.11a, 5, and the expansion of an industry or business pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318.11, subsection A and 5.
Yeah, just right. That's your motion?
That's my motion.
That's second? Motion's second, all have time to consider, I'll fit it with aye. Pose, I have it.
You have a five-minute recess, Mr.?
Yes, five-minute recess. Ms. Davis, you won't be able to go this time. We take a five-minute recess.
You want to talk to that boy? We're talking about management.
Turn us all off, quit. Y'all quit? Got it?
Hey, dawg, I like, we do that, I like you for that.
I want to go with the next one.
Yes, you will.
Thank you. Thank you.